I'd like to call a meeting to order, roll call.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takoka. Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Marquardt.
Here.
President Byrne.
Here. Is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook president pro temp?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president pro temp for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Marquardt.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have been called to order, so would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Or two there, but so we've been prohibited of using these even though we've seen them used in other states very effectively. And we certainly appreciate the public's concern about law enforcement using drones to invade someone's privacy. And the law that was passed recently wouldn't allow for that. But in an open area where someone doesn't have an expectation of privacy and you could otherwise look at them if you could get in a position, but you can put a drone in front. And I often tell people, I was on a SWAT team years ago, I literally had a mirror on the end of a stick to look around a corner to see if there was a gunman around the corner. Well, now our technology allows us to put a drone around that corner. So an officer doesn't even have to put himself in harm's way or potentially have a confrontation with someone. You can envision a scenario where a mentally disturbed person maybe has armed himself with a knife or a gun. We don't want to get too close to that person, but information is key and this kind of technology allows us one other tool to try and defuse that without a confrontation.
Pat, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Your chief, public service under like the monthly reports, is that just like going out and helping when you guys get a public service call? It's just an assist kind of thing, nothing crime?
Correct.
So I just want to point something out that is very important here. You know, past six years and the service calls have dramatically increased, public service calls over the years. And I look at this as a good thing. This, to me, that tells me the trust in police, that they come out, they help, they assist. This is not crime related, correct?
Correct.
This is not like moving violations kind of thing. This is something where they're asked to come out and assist in some manner. And I think we are extremely fortunate to have the department that we have and the leadership under Chief Kreese. And I think anyone should feel safe anywhere they go in this town. You know, it's such a wonderful place and they've created, and this goes back almost six years, Pat, and you just see the increase. And that just shows that the police are committed to being there for the residents.
Oh, yes. I have nothing but good comments about the department and I heard good comments about the chief, too.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, ma'am. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? If not, we'll go to the village presidents. We have two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is recognition and celebration of Pride Month, June 2023. Whereas the Village of Vernon Hills is a welcoming and inclusive community that recognizes equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning people. And all residents of the Village of Vernon Hills deserve a safe place to call home, where they are welcomed, accepted, and supported by family and friends and neighbors. And Pride Month was founded on the one-year anniversary of the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall uprising in Lower Manhattan in New York City, in which LGBTQ+ individuals and allied friends fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. The nation was founded upon the principles that every person has been created equal and has the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness under protection of law. The Village of Vernon Hills accepts and celebrates its residents regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity. The Village of Vernon Hills believes all residents deserve to feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their neighbors and community leaders. Now therefore be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills that June is hereby proclaimed and recognized as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Pride Month in the Village of Vernon Hills. Be it further resolved that it is encouraged that all members of the Vernon Hills community eliminate prejudice wherever it exists by accepting all residents as equal and by honoring our great diversity through celebrating our LGBTQ+ friends and neighbors. Proclaim this sixth day of June 2023. Something I had from, I was talking to manager earlier, something I got from one of my classes, counseling class at Northeastern Illinois University. An instructor said, your candle doesn't burn any brighter when you blow somebody else's candle out. It doesn't. And in fact, it makes the whole room darker. The room is at its best when everybody's candle is burning as bright as it can. So inclusive and being inclusive and being diverse is something I'm happy to say this community really, really supports. Second proclamation is an Eagle Scout proclamation. Would you like to come on up, please? This is a proclamation congratulating August Jones on earning the rank of Eagle Scout. August Jones of Troop 273 is a Life Boy Scout and whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest honor to be bestowed by the Boy Scouts and stands for the ultimate representation of citizenship and good character. August's Eagle Scout project was building a clothing changing station on a mountain bike park. August received his Eagle Scout rank in a Court of Honor on March 18th, 2023 with recognition of his personal dedication and extraordinary achievement. Now therefore Roger L. Byrne, President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills hereby proclaim that August Jones be congratulated and honored for earning the rank of Eagle Scout dated this sixth day of June 2023. Congratulations.
Actually, too, you can come right about if you want to take a picture at the rear. You can come around and make sure. No, you stay here so he can handle it and he can take a picture. He can take a group picture.
Well, however you want to, however you want to, whatever. What's best for you for the picture, Nick?
Okay. We could get him around back.
Or do you want to come? Just come up here.
Okay. He wants to stay up here. All right. Because what you're on, please, man, I can get it. Please. Go get the picture, man. I got everyone's picture. You get it.
Turn it on first.
August, look at me.
Can I ask, August, are there any merit badges that you don't have on your sash?
I don't have all of them.
Yeah, would you like to say something?
Say a few words if you care.
Feel free. You don't have to, but you may if you wish.
And question, where did you end up building this?
So this was in a mountain bike park in Kenosha. I tend to bike there and I really enjoy mountain biking, so I decided why not build a changing room where I bike frequently. And I contacted, I think it was the Kenosha County Park District, and they had a project for me and so I ended up building that.
Great. Well, congratulations. It's quite, it's quite a recognition. Very difficult accomplishment.
The project itself, it took me like a couple, a good amount of weekends to work on it, I think like five or something like that. I did it with a group of like, I think, 10 individuals, other scouts and friends and stuff came up and helped me. It took me like, I think, two-ish months because it was just hard to find weekends in the summer to do it, but I managed to get it done.
Good job. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Assistant Village Manager, update on summer events.
Good evening, summer events. With the arrival of summer, it's time to start sharing information on the many wonderful events that will be occurring in Vernon Hills. First up, this Saturday, June 10th at 1:00 PM, it's Pageant. Pageant is intended to provide contestants an opportunity to be selected to represent our community as Little Miss, Junior Miss, and Miss Vernon Hills. Pageant will be conducted at the Sullivan Center this Saturday at 1:00 PM. Good luck to all. Next up, we have the Vernon Hills Memorial Arbor Theater Concert Series. We have six concerts planned for the summer at our beautiful Arbor Theater located at 50 Memorial Drive. On Wednesday, June 21st, we have Classical Blast playing classic rock. On Thursday, June 29th, we have The Flat Cats, which is a swing jazz themed band. On Thursday, July 20th, we have The Feel Good Party Band playing pop, party, and cover music. On Wednesday, July 26th, we have School of Rock. Everyone knows that's a local band based out of Libertyville consisting of young students. On Thursday, August 3rd, we have Prairie Station, which is modern country. And on Thursday, August 10th, we have Rosie and the Rivets, which is a 50s and 60s themed band. All shows start at 7:00 PM. In the event of severe weather, concerts may be moved to the Sullivan Center. Next up, on June 25th, the Police Department will be hosting the Jim and Helen Hare Veterans Fishing Derby for service members and veterans receiving treatment at the Captain James A. Level VA Hospital. This annual event provides veterans and service members a day of recreation away from the facility and an afternoon of barbecue, great fishing, and sunshine in beautiful Vernon Hills. While this event is not open to the public, many community volunteers, local charitable organizations, including Legion Post 1247 and village staff, are on site to help make this an exceptional event. We want to say thank you to the chief and the Vernon Hills Police Department for continuing this tradition and legacy of service. Thank you to the Vernon Hills Park District for making this a beautiful venue available. And again, thank you to the village board for your continued sponsorship of veterans and veterans initiatives. Parade, on July 4th, we'll be conducting our annual parade. The parade steps off just before 9:00 AM at Deer Path in the area of the Countryside Fire Station. Our local legion will lead the parade followed by our entertainment and our local first responders. Join us, join your friends, join your neighbors for this great community event. July 4th fireworks, perhaps one of the best settings in Olive Lake County to take in a fireworks show, join us at Century Park on July 4th. The Park District will be providing musical entertainment. The big fun band will be performing leading up to fireworks. Fireworks are launched over Little Bear Lake with a launch time being at dusk, which is traditionally around 9:15 PM. As a reminder, there is road construction occurring on Lakeview Parkway with the widening project. Information on safe ingress and egress and available handicap parking will be shared as we get closer to this event. Vernon Hills Days, as the board is aware, we are returning to our original branding for this great summer event and our committee has been hard at work planning an amazing four-day event. Vernon Hills Days 2023 will be hosted in partnership with the Vernon Hills Park District, who is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. Thanks to the Park District for sponsoring Saturday entertainment. We have invited our new committee chair, Brandon Atkins, to join us and announce the bands and other entertainment. Brandon?
Thank you, John. Hi, for those of you who I haven't met, I'm Brandon Atkins, new chairman to the Village Summer Celebration, formerly Summer Celebration Vernon Hills Days. Events, as you can see, the Thursday, the 13th through Sunday, the 16th, we will have ride bracelet specials for the kids every single day. The bands start out Thursday night with Six Speed Tranny, which is a local rock cover band, opening up for our fireworks show, which should take place around 9:15 as well, depending on the sunset. Friday, we have some acts that are not finalized quite yet, we're working towards contracts on, but that should be coming in the next week or so. So keep an eye out on our website and our Facebook page. Saturday, during the day, we will have Kids Crafts from 1:00 to 3:00. And then the entertainment is sponsored by the Park District, celebrating their 50th anniversary of Ronnie Rice, Cryin' Shames, and the Buckingham's. And then Sunday, Kids Crafts again from 1:00 to 3:00. There is a kids game show. There is Cream a Cop, where we can raise some money for a local foundation by leveraging our police force and smashing a, you know, plate of shaving cream in their face. There's a free bags tournament and then we are bringing entertainment back on Sunday and starting with Mike and Joe, so they'll be playing from 6:00 to 7:30.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Great to see you. And our last event is Little Bear Rib Fest and we want to give a shout out to the Vernon Hills Park District for hosting and coordinating this late summer event at Century Park. Little Bear Rib Fest is a traditional mix of blues, brews, and barbecue and is the perfect way to enjoy a late summer evening. This event will be conducted Friday, August 18th and Saturday, August 19th at Century Park. This event is hosted and conducted by our partners at the Park District and includes a financial donation by the village board that goes toward the award-winning blues musicians that will be performing. Mark your calendars, August 18th and 19th for the last community event of the summer. We wish everyone a safe and wonderful event season.
And again, we're celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Park District, so 50th.
That's right.
50 years old, our own Vernon Hills Park District.
I have a quick question. Do we have like a bike corral ever at these events? Given with the construction and stuff, maybe more bikers will be attending and having like a man, someone having a corral where you're checking bikes? Is that ever, like in one of those parking lots on that, whether that be the south and by the Rustoleum or the VIP? Has we ever given any thought to that, to make life a little easier for bikers instead of finding a rack or a tree to lock them up on? I mean, chief, do you think there's enough bike traffic to warrant that?
I don't know. It's, it's an interesting question and something I think that we could kick around as staff. So Chris?
Yeah, I can certainly talk with some of our crews. I obviously wasn't here last year when they did it, but I can talk to some of the guys and see what the availability we have to set up something like that and if needed, where the best location will be.
Right. You know, you get like a ticket or something like that for your bike, you don't have to worry about locking it and it's safe and the corral, it's free. It's something that we would like to explore. I'd be up for that.
Any other comments or questions from the board on summer stuff? Okay. Then next would be Finance Director and Treasurer.
Thank you. Mike's going to pull up a report here so we can follow along. So I've included a new monthly report in the packet. And again, I just wanted to touch on that and walk through that briefly to let you know what kind of information's involved here. So is that getting bigger, Mike, or is that? That's good. Okay. All right. So if we look at this, this is a cash and investment balance, monthly balance report. Look focusing on the left column there shows all of our bank accounts by bank and classified into the operating, operating reserve, and core investment categories that I went over last month. Moving from left to right, the bank or the cash balances are shown there from the end of last year, 43022, and then the end of last month, 228, and then as well as the end of the current month we're reporting on, which is March. And then the far two columns just show the monthly cash change and then the cash change since the beginning of the year. And then if you work your way all the way to the bottom right, we have, so the one-month change in cash was an increase in 4.2 million and then year-to-date change in cash was just under 13 million. So that shows, that just shows a summary of the accounts. And then the page two just shows us a little bit visuals here. Top-left pie chart shows where we hold these funds. The banking, the First American Bank's our main operating bank account. And then US Bank is our custodial for our investment funds. And then Illinois Funds is kind of a reserve, reserve holding. And as we move forward here, the 85% Illinois Funds, expect that to go down and then the US Bank amount to go up because I am working on building out the investment portfolio. The pie chart on the right, again, just shows those three classifications, core, core investment, operating reserve, and operating, operating funds. And then the bottom chart just shows the general ledger balances for cash by fund. Just a quick, quick reference for the board, and this will be included every month. And then in addition, I am working on quarterly reports to provide detail on investment activity for the month, which includes yield, duration, holdings, as well as the quarter, quarterly budget versus actual, which includes the cash activity for the quarter, and then the revenue and expenditures versus budget. So that's kind of the completing, the complete financial package that I'm anticipating and planning out here. And those other two reports I mentioned would be provided quarterly. Now, if the board wants to see more information than what's attached in this report each month, I'd be happy to do that. I'm just working on finding the happy medium between dad overkill and keeping the board well informed. So that was my walkthrough of that report. If there's any questions or comments for me at this time, I'd be happy to hear them.
Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. All right, you're done. Thank you, Tom. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a brief shout out to one of our own elected officials, trustee Dr. Oppenheim last night helped be a good partner in the community, helped us keep the community safe. Like we encourage all citizens when they see something that doesn't look right, you know, we'd like them to pay attention to that. And when, I like to say, when that hair stands up on the back of the neck, that's a good time to call 911. And that's what Dr. Oppenheim did last night. He saw a potential unsafe driver, notified us, was able to give us information of where this driver was. Our officers were able to get there and took an unsafe driver off the street last night. So thank you for your good citizenship there, Dr. Oppenheim. It's a great example and one that we'd like everyone in the community to follow when they see something that appears unsafe. You know, again, we're going to go and investigate, we're not going to just jump on someone just because we get a 911 call and we just want the community to trust us that call when they see something that, tell us what they're seeing and we'll go help sort it out. And if it turns out to be nothing, everyone goes their own ways. But in this case, who knows what kind of tragedy you averted. So thanks for your assistance with that.
Thank you. I appreciate the shout out. Glad to do my part and glad that now I have proof where I was when I was late for dinner last night with my wife. So thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd like to add something. I saw, the other day I was driving down Fairway and I'm pretty sure it was Officer Shannon Holubetz helping a car with a tire just completely like missing, like wheels missing. And it looked like he was like in his personal car and I think his wife may have been in the front seat. And he wasn't in a uniform. It was just nice to see still helping when not on duty. So appreciate that, too.
Thanks for that and I, it's, it's one of the things, so Deputy Chief Holubetz is, you know, just a consummate professional and this is one of those jobs that's hard to turn off, you know, when you do this for a living and you do it as long as he has, you see someone that's in need and you just want to help. I'll tell a funny story is that can work out wrong when you wear a uniform every day and little kids are always excited to see police officers and you make it a habit of seeing them and waving and smiling and every now and then maybe I've changed, I'm an hour off my shift, I'm walking through the target, I see a kid look at me and I just, I have to remind myself that this might be a little creepy, so it's a good problem to have, but thanks.
I have that issue as well as a pediatrician sometimes. People kind of wonder.
Public service.
Yeah. I actually, I wanted to add to the, to the resident's point, in terms of staffing, the officers got to our location very quickly after I made the call and I was appreciative of that. It was two minutes or less before they were, before they were there. So thank you for that.
Good. Okay, anything else on this? All right, then Public Works Director?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bring the board's attention to item E on Omnibus regarding the disposal of surplus village vehicles. I received a request, it's kind of timely tonight considering we have an Eagle Scout, August Jones, in our presence, but we received a request from the Boy Scouts of America Northeast Illinois Council, which is located in Vernon Hills, requesting that if we have some surplus equipment trucks, that they be donated to the organization. The Northeast Illinois Council uses this equipment, they use especially dump trucks to help service their Mackajawon Scout Reservation, which serves around 1,600 scouts in the area, including Vernon Hills troops. I spoke with August Jones before this and he's been up there as well. So they requested that if possible, we donate one of our one-ton dump trucks, which is the way that we are planning to move forward and the way this ordinance is written on the Omnibus tonight. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, if we move forward with this item as is, we would be planning to donate that vehicle to the Northeast Illinois Council, which I would just add one final note, we, the Village of Vernon Hills did the same thing. We donated two trucks to them back in the 90s, which they were very thankful for. Those trucks have obviously seen their, seen the end of their life since then and so they're coming back for another request to the board.
Well, we donated our old bus to Special Recreation District. So yeah, we've, this is, we've done this before, so yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to ask about it because it wasn't clear from the packet that the intent was to actually donate. It just said donate or, or put to auction and then I didn't see where the actual ordinance was.
So it's donated, the other three on the, on the list are auction, correct?
That's correct. So if you look under the itemized list of each vehicle with their VIN numbers, we put the expected value, the minimum expected value at auction, and then for the one F-350, one-ton dump truck, we said to be donated.
Perfect, perfect. Okay. Thank you.
So they're going to use them up at Mackajawon? Cool. I was there several times.
You're right.
Sometime in the middle of last century.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with that, there are no other staff parts? Okay, then it's Omnibus Vote Agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through J?
Motion to approve items A through J on the Omnibus Voting Agenda.
Second.
Motion second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schink?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. And here's the good news, folks, that's it, right?
Unfinished or new business?
Yeah, other new business communication, if anybody has anything they want to bring up. There's no unfinished, unfinished additional business, there isn't any. Has anybody, any new communications or anything?
I just want to highlight the tragedy that occurred on Friday. I don't know if you wanted to speak, speak to it sadly on Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate on, on a day recognized as gun violence, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We had an unsecured loaded firearm left in the presence of young people and although our investigation is still ongoing and I can't comment about specifics, it's just clear that this was certainly a situation where no unsecured gun should have ever been. And this, and in this case, a two-year-old was, has a devastating injury as a result. And it just highlights how, how quickly tragedies happen. And, you know, the only place for a firearm is in the hands of a trained, you know, responsible gun owner or secured somewhere and incapable of falling into the wrong hands. And it's a tremendous responsibility and just probably a good opportunity to reinforce that message that it's, it's either locked up, secured somewhere where no one unauthorized can get it, or it's in the train, in the hands of a trained and responsible gun owner and never in between. It's just a good rule to follow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very true. Any other communication or concerns from the board?
I'll just say, congratulations to all the high school graduates and middle school, have they graduated yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so congratulations to all of them. It's kind of nice to get back to ceremonies again and
Yes.
And actually have parties, so.
Okay. Ready for summer. All right. And there will be no committee, the whole?
Correct.
No closed session? So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.